Meeting, special meeting on the, today, June 20th, 2019. All trustee members are present. And we would like to welcome our new librarian, Dara, to this meeting and to Escondido. We're very, very pleased to have you here. Thank you for taking our, our offer. We're pleased with that.
Thank you.
And thank you, Barbara, for helping us find a very competent person. We're real pleased with that. Next item is if there was anyone here, which there is not, to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, this would have been the time, but since we have no one here, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes of the Library Board of Trustees meeting on May 9th, 2019. You all received the, the minutes via email? Are there any additions or corrections?
I had a correction.
Okay.
The minutes that we are voting on from the previous meeting at the top say April 25th rather than May 9th.
Right, and that's, that's the, the new way we're doing this? And I forgot that, and I appreciate that you telling us that. Yes, we're, we're gonna run them pretty much a month behind?
No.
No?
No, we're talking about, we're talking about the minutes, not the stats.
Okay. It was the stats, yeah.
Right, it's just the heading, thank you. The heading is, the date in the heading of the minutes from the last meeting is incorrect, so we need to correct that.
Alright.
Also, Dara's last name is misspelled in Agenda Item 3 in two locations, so I would ask that that be corrected.
Would you, Zach, do you?
Two D's and Brad's.
No N.
No S.
No, there is an S, no N. One of them says Brands and the other says Brad, without a D.
Okay.
D-R-A-N-S.
Correct.
Zach, did you get those? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to correct these minutes? It's not coming up on my screen.
I'm not gonna push mine 'cause it'll come up, Elmer.
Let's try it one more time, let's see if the system was working a few minutes ago. There we go.
Okay, it's been, uh, been moved by Mr. Gorney and seconded by Clemmons to make adjustments or addition, or corrections really, on the date of our minutes and also the spelling of our new librarian's last name. Okay, all of those please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, current business, could we please have an update on the Volunteer Community Outreach Liaison? And Mr. Cameron, you've been heading this project, so why don't you start?
Well, especially a, kind of a re, a quick refresher of what's going on, especially with the new trustees. You may have heard this already, so I'll make it very brief. The, some time ago, the trustees approved a creation of a community outreach program, and the definition of outreach here, or definition of the intent here, was to outreach to the public, which we assume a lot of the folks in the community do not enter the buil- we do have, what, 1,100 or so a day, or something like that? But the assumption is that there are a lot of people in our community who have not been, at least certainly not recently, in the library. So the purpose of this program is to reach out to those members in the community and somehow get them into the building to go through a kind of a learning, a very, you know, very low-key learning of what's happening in the library, which, which includes perhaps an address by the librarian about things that are going on, as well as a quick tour around. And I think visually, just being in the building, that will educate people, I think, a great deal, especially if, when staff says, "By the way, we're doing these other things too." Now, to, to make sure that we're communicating, or I'm communicating correctly, this is an outreach program to bring people into the building. The library already has an outreach program, an excellent one. They go out to the community, staff will go out to different organizations, that's been going on for a while now, and that's, so that's different than what the focus is here, so that's it. A few things that have happened, we have two volunteers, fine women, who are now going through the training, because the library is set up under Katie Dupre to train our two volunteers, who volunteered to, to be the liaison to the community. And so they're learning about what's going on in the building also, and that, that's an excellent program to prepare them for that. A few other thing, a couple of other things, fortunately, our trustee, John Schwab, was quite interested in this project, so he, we talked together, and he was quite interested in helping out, and he's jumped right in, which makes these other, the volunteers very pleased that, you know, here is a trustee that's interested in spending some time. So that's where we are right now. You'll hear periodically, we hope sometime you'll hear periodically, that the people have been trained and they've now reached out and start bringing people in, into the building.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Elmer, is Katie training the volunteers, or is Cookie?
No, Katie, I talked with her again this morning. She, she has set up, already set up programs where she will have certain staff members take them around and show them what's going on in the building.
I think, I think there's a misunderstanding with that. Katie is giving a tour to the two volunteers of the library, that's what's happening today. There isn't a training for volunteers.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, if I use the word "she's training," that's not correct. She's just, she's just educating them. In other words, setting it up so they know what's going on in the library.
Do other members have questions for Elmer about this program?
Um, I do. I'm getting two different interpretations of what the volunteers are gonna be doing, and I wanna make sure that Dara and her staff are totally in agreement with what the volunteers are going to be doing and what the volunteers will be telling, offering, marketing, whatever, to the public. And in my conversations with Dara, I believe you wanted them to use either materials that you're gonna develop, or materials that already exist, like a brochure saying, "Come on in for a tour," and that any tours that would be given, would be given by your staff. Am I correct?
Correct. So outreach is very much a professional piece of libraries, it's something that the library staff most often, in fact, department heads organize and go out and do. Since the late 90s, outreach has been the better return on investment for getting bodies into the building, so it's been a focus for libraries for a really long time. Just in May alone, we reached 350 people through class tours, we reached 848 people through outreach events, that doesn't include another 300 cards issued to students and parents at Del Lago Academy. So this is something that our staff is, is a huge part of their job, it is part of the professional positions in the building. And they do give tours as well, we welcome tours, we find that most places are interested in us having to go to their events and speak at their events and educate them on what is available for their library, because we can also tweak our conversation based on what their interests are and the resources that might be of greatest use to them specifically. I, we look at our Friends of the Library, our Friends of the Pioneer Room, all of our volunteers as ambassadors to the library that are looking for places, "Have you been to Rotary Club? Can you go speak?" To get us out there, make those connections, and when we're making those connections, that's the time for us to have those relationships where anyone who wants a tour of the library can organize one, and we can make sure that we are appropriately staffed for that type of an event. But it really can't be something that's outside of the professional staff's hands, in my professional.
I think we need to discuss this, because we were moving along, at least, for several meetings, just to say, "Let's get more people into the building," assuming that a lot of people have not been in the building, and that was basically it, to educate and set up a program. If that is, in some ways, conflicting with what you're already doing, and if it's redundant, then first, maybe we gotta talk about whether we should have that program.
Well, I think, I think this all came about when we were developing this strategic plan, and when we had those meetings all over town, it became apparent that a lot of people in Escondido knew nothing about the library. And so, the last thing that I wanna see is to create a program that interferes with the professionalism of the library. But how do we go about getting these people informed and interested and maybe into our library? How do we do that? Because the professionals have so much that they're doing, and, and they're doing a great job, but why did this come out during these meetings if we are really meeting the needs of outreach with our professionals? And so that's my question.
So there's two parts to that. Part one is, I have now worked in libraries for 20 years, I have yet to have a week go by that I don't have a regular patron tell me, "Oh, I didn't know the library had that." As people go through different phases in life, they use the library differently, so we're always catching people by surprise, and I've yet to have a week where I don't hear the words, "I didn't know the library had that." Just like when you go outside of the library, "Oh, you have multiple locations," or, again, unaware of what's in the library. So the best way to get to the people that aren't in the library is go where they are. And that is a huge part of our children's services, our teen services, our adult services, and we go to, just, let's see, we had an outreach event in children's where somebody was out of the building, either at a Lunch and Learn School event, or a festival, or an elementary lunch, a science night, a STEM event, every day in May. That's every single day, somebody is somewhere telling groups about our library. We now have our STEM outreach, which is very popular, and one of their biggest places that they go is a retirement facility. They, they love it, and most people think STEM is for, you know, teens and tweens, it's not. We're, we're really out there, I can definitely report back on that next time, right now we're very summer reading focused, but we're always looking for opportunities in the community, so the best thing that our friends and our trustees and all of our volunteers can be doing to help us is just inviting us to things, and we'll make sure the right person goes.
Well, let me offer something that might be, something that would be, I think, helpful. I found out from Elmer, who referred me to Times Advocate, they used to have a, a listing they put out of all the organizations and groups that existed in Escondido. So I got ahold of the Times Advocate, and they referred me back to the Pioneer Room, because a new group now owns the Time Advocate, and they don't keep track of that stuff, and he said, "I know it's on file somewhere in the, in the Pioneer Room," which of course was closed, I couldn't get into it, but-
It's today at 1:00.
Okay, but I've, I've got, yeah, it'll, it'll have to be early July before I get in there. Or, or maybe the volunteers can get in there and, and find that old database, and, and we could, the volunteers could update it. It's probably at least 10 years old, if, if Elmer's information's correct. He was, you're sure it exists, and it's about eight to 10 years old, the Times Advocate guy knew about it, but, you know, they had just recently, like three or four years ago, bought the company and didn't, didn't have anything current and didn't keep, they did, once they find out the Pioneer had the old copies, they didn't keep anything. So if we could get ahold of that database, there is a wealth of information that could be refined, brought up to date, and potentially you could have volunteers contact these groups and say, "Hey, would you like a, a representative from the library to contact you, to, to give you a presentation on services?" And this would, could, could work in conjunction with what staff does and be a help to them. That's just a thought.
I think too, maybe getting back to Ron's question, you know, I think it's kind of a, a question of when, when is it enough, and how do we know that it's enough, the outreach that we're doing? And I think that goes back to developing metrics for success for the strategic plan. So, you know, providing programs out in the community, how do we know that those are effective? Do they get, how many people do we want? How many more people a month do we want to enter the doors of the library? Is that really what is truly important? So I think that we need to establish what is successful in that area.
That, so that would be a difficult one to create a metric for. For instance, just this week, we had a program in the Tarantine Room with over 300 participants. There's a point where, as much as we would love to grow, we physically can't fit more people into the space.
Right.
That in and of itself, I think, speaks for a certain amount of success there.
So the fact that maybe in this, when we were doing the strategic plan and, and people didn't know about the library, maybe the fact that you are filling that room kind of negates the problem that we saw previously that people didn't know.
Well, you could make a case for if, if there are new groups and organization, not new, but what new to being outreach, so to speak, by, by, by staff, new groups that were contacted during the month.
Right.
Assuming we can find them.
That you had somebody go out every single day in May.
Right. I think something to, that's a good, I think that is actually, I like where you were headed with that. I think something we could do is really evaluate where we've been in the last year, two years, whatever each department will have notes on, to take a look, where have we been? They know about us. Where can we add?
Right.
And look for creating maybe our, an addition in rotation, so that we're not leaving anyone out, or cutting down our visits necessarily, but maybe rotating from organization to organization and making sure that we're not skipping any schools or anyone else that's interested in having.
So, so would going through that old database and updating it, and then having staff look at it, would that help?
I think, I wouldn't really put the energy into necessarily updating it, my rationale being, just create, you know, finding that list and printing it out might be enough, because they can look at where they've been and then start looking for, with, with programs coming up, who on this list looks like a good next contact, to see if that's the way to go, and then we can, of course, then add them to our list if they welcome us, and we can also be able to report to you, these are our new places we've reached out to that we haven't been before, this is how it went, or we've made phone calls to these seven organizations and they really aren't interested in having the library as a guest, or coming forward to it.
When, when all of this was discussed, there was an assumption made that a lot of folks in town don't know what's happening in the library. We have a certain number of people coming, that's an assumption. Okay, based on that assumption, we start talking about, okay, how can we do something about that? However, if that's not, if the assumption needs to be tested, and if we think it's important that if there are a lot of people in the community who have no idea of what's available to them, then a database decision, which would be wise, is go do a survey and find out. Find out if that's a problem, if, in other words, if we as trustees feel, assuming that there are a lot of people who would really benefit by coming here and finding out what's going on for them.
So-
So that assumption is a good one for us, and if we wanna do something about it, we can do what we're trying right here, hoping that we're using the right assumptions, or if we think that's important enough, let's go find out.
Is that something that Friends of the Library could help with, do any survey?
I have no idea how, it depends on how it's modeled.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I can't speak-
Yeah, 'cause-
-because they volunteered to be at Friends Library.
Right.
But the whole point is, if the trustees feel that's a problem, that there is a potential problem, that there aren't enough people coming into the community to learn, into the library to learn, if we think that's a serious kind of thing to concern, then as trustees, we may wanna choose to, well, let's go get data to find out if that exists, and to what degree, if it does exist, and also do we wanna do anything about it when we, when we hear the data or see the data.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm mentioning volunteers, because paying for a survey is ouch.
Well, and your assumption is definitely true, so I don't know that we need a survey. It's true for Escondido, it's true for San Diego, it's true for Columbus, Ohio, anywhere you wanna mention. Nobody utilizes the library like they should, and only 50% of the population typically was raised going to the library on a regular basis and knowing the value, whether it's recreational, or studies, or job searching, or any of the other things we do. So I think that to, to determine the ratios are probably maybe not the best use of time. I like the idea of coming up with a list of organizations, and any of them that we haven't reached out to before, this is just part of our job, we'll continue to try and grow as we can to gain those people, the, the people that aren't coming in. And the schools are the best place to start, because you're getting every, you're getting the youth of the entire, well, you're getting all of the people, at least, families. So maybe that's where we target, and that's, you know, but we've gone for like the, some of the retirement facilities, we try to really hit different groups, but seeing a long list, I think, gives us a chance to, you know, think strategically about who we haven't hit and who we wanna target.
Well, what I'm saying is, if the trustees feel that there are a lot of people out there in the community who don't come into the library, therefore have no real idea of what's going on, and if we as trustees feel we want them to come in, then it seems pretty clear that we go find, we go do a survey or find out how many people are not coming in to test that. It may be a survey, or however the survey is done says, "No, there are a lot of people who don't know what's going on, and they really don't care." But I, I have no problem, but I think the trustees need to decide, if, if it's not a problem, let's forget the project. I mean, if-
Well-
-assumption that it's not a-
Well, if, if the assumption is correct, and I'm sure we can look at some, some national library data, et cetera, that'll show what Dara just talked about as, as to what percentage of the population never uses the library.
In Escondido?
Oh, no, in, nationwide, and just figure we're just a, you know, a, a smaller replica of what, what exists in, in similar-sized cities. Well, I, I wouldn't, I'll take the action item of finding that list of all the organizations and sharing that with trustees and giving it to staff, and maybe we can discuss it the next meeting.
And what kind of organizations would you target?
I don't know, I haven't seen a list. I, I have no idea, but I would suspect that, like Dara said, schools, I'm, I'm sure we're getting most of the schools, there might be some private ones, but we've certainly got all the publics.
Schools as well.
Pardon?
We're getting private schools as well.
Yeah, I'm sure you are too, but there might be, that'd be the ones that might be, some of them might be missed, is what I'm saying, because they're, they're small and, and not, not part of the, the larger picture. Let's go, I'm just curious as to what this, what this database that the Times Advocate put out eight, 10, 12 years ago had in it, so I'm gonna go find it and come back and talk to everybody about it the next meeting, if that's okay.
I, I think we need to cut to the chase here a little bit, and I'm, I'm in favor of what John's talking about, but the last thing I wanna do, Daria, is to put something on you that is not needed, which takes staff time. And so if we are doing the job now, and we are covering with the professionals, and we don't need to involve our volunteers, and, and believe me, our volunteers is the strength of this program, but if we don't need them there, we can find somewhere else to have them help us, but the last thing we wanna do is to throw roadblocks at the professional staff. And so we, we have to, we have to consider this very carefully, if we're creating a program just to say we're doing something that's not really needed, kind of like Elmer's talking about, I don't want staff to spend time on that. And somehow we have to, to make that decision, is, is there a group out there we're missing? Can staff cover it? Or do we need this volunteer group led by these two ladies to help staff out? I don't know the answer to that question, but I think that's the question.
Let me speak to the involvement of staff. This is, that at least I've been operating here on, that the staff involvement would be in two ways. One, which they've started now, beginning to work, set up a plan to train our two volunteers, what's going on in the building, educate them. That's over, you know, in a very short period of time, okay? Then, the next involvement of staff would be whoever coordinates or goes out and reaches the community and say, "We would like part of your group to come into our building on a certain date and so forth." The staff would be involved, because that person who has invited them in would talk to staff and say, "By the way, I'm bringing in 12 people next week or something, you know, is, is that acceptable to you?" If, they'll take a tour around the building, and they'll get a quick speech maybe about what's going on in the building, and that's it. That would be the staff involvement. So the ongoing staff involvement, if this were to happen, would be periodically, someone on staff would be advised, "Wait, can we bring in 12 people next week at 12 o'clock?" That's a staff involvement.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
The training component is quite a bit of staff involvement, it, and the outreach is such a huge component of the professional staff. Also, tours are, where they're not something that our staff has actually coordinated, can, depending on what else is going on in the building, be, be, um, a hiccup in workflow. It's not always beneficial. I really think what would be beneficial to the staff, from what we've discussed today, would simply be if somebody wants to put that list together, or pull the list as it is, just so we, it could start us brainstorming of places we can go that we haven't been. Our children's department is truly maxing out, like seriously can't fit any more people into the programs, our storytimes are 80-plus people. Every time they start a new program, it might start off small, 15, the very next program will have 30 kids in it. Their outreach is amazing, and they're really, you know, hitting it out of, out of the park. Adult services, with that position being, the head of adult services being vacant, that would be an area I would really say we could start targeting different adult organizations that we haven't been to before. We were invited to a women's club, and I'm sad to say, can't remember the name, Katie will be going to speak with them and telling them about things going on in the library. Having a specific offshoot of this group to focus on that coordination, I personally don't feel is going to be beneficial.
Well, Dara, I, maybe I'm looking at it differently than you are. Let me share with you what I think. The training of staff of these two people is gonna be done briefly, quickly. It's not training them to do anything, it's just giving them an idea- quickly. It's not training them to do anything, it's just giving them an idea of what's going on in the building. That's not going to take days and days and days. So that's the training of people, the staff. The model, that's in my head, and we did it one time, or in this library some time ago, in this community, where periodically, a group, like in this case, a Rotary group, 12 people were invited on a given day, come in and, at noon, and what'll happen is it'll take about an hour or so, you'll have something to eat or whatever, something like that, which is prepared by that service club. They'll meet with the librarian who comes in and says a few things about what's going on in the building. And they are invited to do a quick walk around the building. That program took one hour's worth of work. It didn't take a lot of staff people to prepare anything, because what they did at that time, they just walked around, in that case with the library, walking to the different parts of the building. So I'm not...
I'm having a hard time understanding your, which, you're thinking a lot of staff times want to be involved in this.
Can I say something?
I, yes. Just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Who's, are, who's giving the tour for the walk around the building? That would be staff, right? So I, I'm just, so what you've just mentioned, I don't see where the volunteer pieces. Like, why is the, where's the volunteer for this?
Yes, absolutely. The volunteer, hopefully the volunteer, because they've learned what's going on in the building, will walk around with the group of five or 10 or 15 people, say, by the way, here's the, this machine does this thing and so forth like that. It's not like taking hours and educating and involving people. They'll walk around the building to show what's going on in the building. The only contact, if you can point my thought, would be, if these applies, the library would fly away a group of eight or 10 people to come and interview or familiarize.
No, because the reason that doesn't work is if a group of 10 or 12 people come in, they're gonna have questions. It will be a professional staff person to give them the tour of the library, which is great, and we coordinate that already and often. And that way, I can have somebody giving the tour that, one, I know they know the library inside and out, I know they know what they're talking about, I also know they'll know when to say, I don't know, and refer you to the right person. And there's an accountability piece that I know that the tour is up to par.
Yeah, and, and, I listened when I was an attendee versus sitting up here to, to this program evolve, and I, I kick myself now, but, because after talking to Patricia and then you, I'm looking at my marketing and sales background, and I'm thinking, okay, I have people out there selling my product in the field, okay, and I have people who are answering questions about the product and services that don't work for me and that haven't been trained for me and by contract with the city of Escondido and LSNS, the library staff cannot direct the volunteers.
Nor can we be held accountable for their operations.
Right. And, and I don't like to throw that as a roadblock, but, but I see, I can, now when I've got my marketing hat on and I've got my people out in the field and I've got somebody else who's gonna volunteer and do the work that I have no control over, I shouldn't say no control, but I have limited control and they have no accountability to me, that wouldn't be acceptable to me as a businessman, okay? So there's gotta be a way that we can develop something where there's existing materials that are developed by staff, whether it be a brochure, a presentation, a video, whatever, that volunteers can take out and say, hey, take a look at this and I can set up a tour for you. And that...
Set up a tour.
Set up a tour, but not do the tour, okay? Because I thoroughly understand, you know, when they start asking questions, there's no, there's, there would be enough percentage of, okay, the volunteers aren't always gonna have the right answer and won't even know it when they don't, okay? And then we, we have, well, they, they told me this and it's really that. And then, then, then we have all this angst happening that doesn't need to happen. So I can't envision having someone give the tour and answer the questions that's not accountable to staff.
And it is a professional position. There is, contrary to some beliefs, librarians don't get to sit and read very much. We do a lot of work behind the scenes. There's a lot to keep it running well, and this is one component that librarians are very passionate about, and that is outreach and getting people into the library. Unfortunately, you know, it's, we don't have 100% of the population, and that is something we will continue to strive for. But it is definitely a professional component and piece of the job.
I still see an important role for volunteers in, in bringing potential groups in or to staff to, for contact and getting, and doing things, but I understand what you're, I understand exactly what your concerns are and I agree with them.
Well, and they do that so well. I mean, we have, at any given time, at least 200 volunteers, it seems. And we have the Friends of the Library who are amazing. Their fundraising is just off the charts for libraries, and they help us with programs and speak kindly to us at meetings and talk about, at least there was one member, the last Friends meeting I was at, that said, once again, she was surprised to run into somebody at a meeting that hadn't realized the library was there and the services we had. So they're ambassadors for the library already, all of our volunteers. And I, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what more they can do. And, I mean, we can always find a project, like you're mentioning. We could have them make recommendations whenever they hear of a great event that we could be present at. But I feel like they, they already do a really wonderful job, and this is just not a piece we particularly need.
Let me share with you, when I came up with this idea, both Ron and I were with the school district for a number of years. And during that time, when I was there, I was involved at the bequest of the Board of Directors to prepare for a bond election, which is hard to pass, was then and still hard to pass, but not as hard anymore. The research at that time was given to us, which said that you will increase the chance of your public supporting a bond election for a school if you just get them in the building to wander around and see for themselves what's going on. So we addressed that to the principals and said, would you please, if you have any chance, to get people coming into the building, parents and so forth, people who have not been in the building for a long time? They just walk around and get an idea. The research suggests strongly that just without getting a lot of detailed information, that people tend to vote, yes, that's worth something and I'll raise my taxes. That influenced me. At that time, it was one of the few bond elections that were passed in the state of California for a school bond. That influenced other subsequent bond election or school. So I was influenced by the idea that if you get people just in the building to look, not give them a great deal of detail, you certainly don't tie up the teachers. They just walk around and see teachers in classrooms and so forth. So it's not a matter of educating the public specifically what's going on in education, and certainly not, in this case, educating them about all the details that are going on. That influenced my thinking, and so that's why I started discussion, and the trustees felt, well, yeah, let's explore that and go that way. I have no interest personally in moving ahead with this program unless there is some support from the trustees, that there's some value in this. And the trustees have to wrestle, all of us have to wrestle with, okay, if we said, yes, go ahead with it, to what degree does it affect the work of the library, the staff? I'm sensitive to that. I know something about operating a building and so forth. Ron knows that and so forth. So if, if it's true that having a program that comes in and it ties up a lot of staff time or disrupts and so forth, that's not appropriate. At least that isn't what I saw to happen. If that's what's to happen, I can agree with the idea, oh, not, we shouldn't do it. I think we need to, I, I'm not comfortable with, I will accept the trustees if you say, this is not the time to do that, or whatever it is. I can live with that.
Well, we have a new library director, and I do not want to start this relationship off by telling her to do something that I'm, I'm hearing from her that she doesn't feel at this time she needs. And so what I would think we would do is I think we should let this play out, put this on hold, and then she is gonna have to keep educating us on how the outreach is going, so that we know it's going. And then if you should feel, as you move down the line, that we need to elicit volunteers, then I would be all for that. But as a board member, I want to do what the professionals tell me to do. As a superintendent, I would have wished the board would have done that quite often. But at least, from what I'm hearing, you're saying right now that the staff can cover this. And so we don't want to put a program on you that you have to do, or I don't, just to please the trustees, but is not really gonna be a help to staff. And I think that's kind of what Elmer was saying. And so I, I believe that at this point, from what I'm hearing from you, is that we're doing fine, the staff is doing fine, and as you assess this, I hope you'll let us know and come back to us if you feel we can do something to help by adding some kind of a volunteer program.
Ron, maybe I should know this. Do we have any data gathering already in existence that tells us how many new library cards are issued? Do we have that?
Yeah, we have that.
Okay, and we do, we get, we get that on our report?
Right.
How many new people got a library card for the first time?
I think we're a month behind, right, in this?
Yes.
So we would know for April.
Okay. That's, that's a small measure of, it wouldn't satisfy the question of a lot of people out of the community. At least that would give us some sense of, you know, how many new people are coming in. Because any new person gets a library card for the first time is certainly gonna get educated, but not any staff involved. They can get a card and log in and say, my God, that's a new library card.
We're just needing to make sure that they're coming in right after they get the card.
Right. And usually, there's nothing that's gonna come closer and be more encouraging to get them in than having a new library card. And, you know, we just gave out 300 this week at, or last month, I'm sorry, at one event. So with Laris coming aboard too, that makes it even easier to go out and issue cards whenever we're, you know, at a, you know, street festival, a school visit, or whatever event we might be at.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and put the program on hold and revisit, see if there's anything new to look at in three months.
It's been moved that we put the program on, John has made a motion to put the program on hold and look, and look at it again in three months. Is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. That's not coming up, but would you please vote now?
I don't know if I'm gonna vote for myself or Elmer. All right, here, I'm gonna push my button, we'll see what happens. Okay, I just voted for Elmer.
You voted for Elmer.
I'll make sure it's noted correctly in a minute, it's not a problem, so.
Elmer, you're...
You can record Elmer as a yes reluctantly.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, our next item is the strategic plan progress. Dara?
Okay. Strategic plan progress, I'm not sure, do you go through this line, item by line item, or did you decide to highlight specific ones?
Well, we can't go through item by item every time. What Patricia usually did was she would bring us three or four items.
Oh, okay.
Which we would deal with. But if you have, in your past experience, if you have a better way to do this, we would be open, because as one trustee, I think we've kind of been struggling with this issue as to how to deal with it.
Okay. Well, can I give you kind of a brief overview in my...
Sure.
...briefs? So some things that are in the process is we are currently scheduling the first round of interviews for the librarian, too, which is a simple phone interview for the first part. We are revisiting the logo that was created back in 2016 and then just really never got launched. I am talking with Joanna, and I would like a little bit of the city's input, are they happy with the logo? Can we bring it back and potentially launch that and put it on all of our items? So we can start branding the library and use that to help get our name out there and get people to identify us as an involved entity for various events. And I'm personally just getting to know staff at this point. As far as the, so the branding piece, revisiting the logo would be one of our, parts of our strategic plan. And we're also reaching out with some of our STEAM programs. I know that Gabe and Katie are very active, and the Friends of the Library were recently kind enough to approve the purchase of another, eight artificial VR, yes, virtual reality piece, which surprisingly is most popular at the retirement home, even more than the school. They absolutely loved it. And so the new equipment is just more easy to take along. So they are continuing to reach out, and they did visit Del...
Del Lago.
Del Lago. And that's where they did the library card sign up, and that was very successful, and that was one of their STEAM programs. So they continue to target a variety of ages in their outreach, and so maybe with the list that we come up with, they'll be able to target some more.
Hey, I have a, a long-term suggestion. In the, the street fair, okay, we kind of rained out last time, but that might be a great opportunity. We, you could be, if you request it, you could probably get electricity, and if you had VR there, you'd have a line a block long.
Okay. All right, I will make sure they know. Okay, sorry, my note.
Dara, would it be too much trouble when you're going through, could you kind of point out where you're at on the sheet?
Sure.
If it's just general, that's fine, but if you are speaking to a specific item, it would help me if, if I kind of knew where you were.
So on the first, the one I just mentioned with Katie and Gabe getting out, I was referring to the Quality Literacy and STEAM programs.
That's first page?
That is the first page.
Okay, good.
So I feel like we definitely met that mark again this month. So a lot of this is April, so it's really Patricia's report, so I'm, I feel a little less connected. But I am also happy that we're revisiting and looking at branding, which I believe is on our last page, right? Oh, sorry, Raise Public Awareness Through Enhanced Marketing Plan, back on page one, second to the top.
So do we have...
So, do we have, like, a physical, like, written down marketing plan?
We do.
Okay.
And I can get that and see what the date was on it. I don't know how recently it was revised and revisited.
Great, that would be awesome.
So, would you like me to, would I include that in the minutes from the next meeting? Is the marketing plan to be reviewed, or what's the process?
Um, I mean, you can forward it to us?
Yeah. I can email it to you individually.
Uh huh, yep.
You can email it to another group. I just have a response. Oh, okay. Okay. So, I guess, is there a particular thing that you have questions about, anything within the strategic plan that maybe Patricia didn't talk about in the last month or so, and you might want to know where it is? Like, the marketing plan's a really good example, I'll get a copy out, so that we could have an area of focus, because there's so much, and then I talk a little bit about all of the programs and the outreach throughout, just regular discussion.
Well, that, that's what I was speaking about. We have struggled with this, to be quite honest. I mean, we've got this great big plan, we can't have the director go over every single item every time. If anyone has a great idea, I would certainly like it to be brought forward. Otherwise, I think we need to pick three or four, or maybe even five items that you could go over each time, so that we.
Oh, repetitively, or?
No, no, no. Three different ones, so that we're covering them as we go, but we're not covering 40 in a, in a day.
Ron, can I interject?
Sure.
At your, let's see, this was at the May 9th meeting, you guys set your priorities that you wanted the library director to report on, and if I remember correctly, you were going to rotate those quarterly?
Right.
So, the priorities that you identified were marketing, program development and outreach, Hispanic outreach, literacy, safety and security. So, Dara, what Patricia was doing was providing a written report that was included with the agenda, that would connect the goal language from the strategic plan, and so it would say, goal, connect through outreach, grow services to users, priority, Hispanic outreach. And then she would give the example that happened within that month of what they did to accomplish that goal. So, you, if you go back and look at the agenda packet from May 9th, I would use that as a template, and then I think if that's still your direction, that you want this to rotate quarterly, then you would just do that for the next three months, and then the board will reprioritize what they want you to, to focus on and report on. And then Patricia, in her director's report, would also touch on things that were outside of those priority areas, but that had happened that month. So, for example, if, I can't think of a good example, but if there was an event that spoke to another area of the strategic plan, that wasn't one of those five things that I just read off, she would say, we did this event, and that speaks to something else, right? Because there is obviously an acknowledgement amongst this group that library staff are accomplishing elements of the strategic plan all the time. But what you're reporting to them during these quarterly updates is areas that fall into their stated priorities.
These priorities are page, page 10 of the agenda.
So. May I make a comment about, when I first saw this, I've been through other organizations, whether it'll have, you know, plan of action and so forth like that. When I first saw this, I was very, I guess I was sympathetic to being a former school administrator. And I, my reaction, for lack of better language, I said, holy cow, that's a whole bunch of stuff. Not that it's inappropriate. I, from my viewpoint, and especially from my viewpoint, because I can only comprehend so much information at one time, I would prefer to see maybe one item that the librarian says, I'd like you to know about this for positive reasons, we're really gaining here. And, secondly, if, if the librarian feels that there's one area that I'm obligated to get something done, but we're having difficulties getting it, and that would be enough for me, because that would tell me that the administrator is trying to get the thing done. And as a listener, I'm not too sure that I'm going to retain 15 different comments on all of these.
Right. So, Elmer, if I could speak to that, the reason that we have it published in the agenda is so that you don't have to listen and retain it. You can refer to it, because it's part of the published agenda. It's, it's been stated from the board that it's a very important priority that you guys have oversight over the success and implementation of the strategic plan. That's definitely something the community has expressed concern over, and holds the board accountable for helping to oversee the implementation of the plan. And so, I think it's very important that, you know, to acknowledge what Ron said, we have struggled with this in defining metrics and defining a plan for tracking the implementation and success of the strategic plan. So, I think this is the closest that we've gotten to something that is tangible and successful, and connects the work that the library staff are doing, because they're working very, very hard with the goals outlined in a relatively vague strategic plan, because that's the purpose, is to set this vision, right? So, I would recommend that you not move away from this, because we just established this, and give Dara an opportunity to have a couple of months where she's reporting on those priority areas that you've already established. And then, if, as you're continuing to work amongst yourselves and look at data and, you know, hopefully develop other metrics and things like that, we can continue to tweak it. But I just, I would hate to undo something that we've barely had an opportunity to really flesh out.
I'm not suggesting undo. As I look at this, and maybe I, I see X's. Doesn't that assume that something's going on with that particular goal?
Right.
And that's good for me. I see X's, things are happening. What I was suggesting, that maybe the, the librarian would say, I'd like to call your attention to number one, or another, and especially wonderful results are happening, just inform us about that, how we're doing that, and if there's any trouble areas, in another word, just two different items. Because we can all read this, and if that says what it's supposed to say, boy, things are happening, all these X's, not.
And I think that.
Am I reading this document correctly?
I think.
Does that just say, same thing, things are going on along with that?
Yes, you're reading the document correctly, and I think what we're saying is that for the next three months, we've established five priorities, which Dara will tell us about every time that we meet. So, she'll highlight, this is going well, this is what we did for this priority, this is what we did for this priority. So, that way, she's not tackling 40 items, she's tackling five, but she will still provide the X's in the boxes for all 40, or however many there are.
Thank you for the reminder, and also, you reminded me about those five.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
So, the, the spreadsheet, I think, works in coordination with the information that comes in the agenda packet. So, that report is the detail, and the Excel spreadsheet is the tick box, if that makes sense. There are a couple things in the strategic plan, when I was going over it, that I did find. One of them states that the strategic plan will be reviewed by the library board of trustees and city staff annually. So, that would be a great opportunity to, for us to kind of reassess where we are, or, you know, establish the metrics. So, I don't know if we want to put that on the calendar, or if you guys have looked at it in the last two years, because I think this was implemented the start of 2017, 2018?
Fall of 17.
Fall of 17. So, it would be time for us to take a look at it. And then the other thing that the strategic plan mentioned was that plan implementation will include a schedule with specific action steps and timelines. And so, I'm wondering if we have a schedule. So, let me speak to that. The date of the strategic plan is July 2018, so a year would be July of 2019, which is perfect timing. So, I would recommend that you calendar and update, probably not for July, like, you know, give Dara some time to settle in, but very close after that to really review this and discuss. Regarding the point that you just referenced, that is the Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
So, again, we're looking to improve what has been provided, and we're looking for guidance from the trustees. Because when I think of a schedule, I think forward-looking, as opposed to backwards-looking. I mean, you report on what you've done, but the, the schedule would tell me to expect, you know, checkboxes in which of the various locations, or even, you know, putting into a schedule the fact that you're getting a new VR or an updated VR, because that would tell me, okay, you're, you're starting, you know, this month, and you intend to have it two months from now, and so then I know, okay, starting after two months from now, it would be implemented, things would be happening. So, I can anticipate, you know, more people going to use it, or then it's available for the street fair, things like that. So, it would be kind of like more of an oversight as to where you think you're going to go, and then we could have more influence into what we think needs to happen to the future. It's a kind of a big undertaking, I would assume.
I guess, I'm not totally following, so you, are we creating this from scratch, or what are we, what are you changing as far?
I guess I would, to start off with, would want a calendar of what you've, what you've scheduled for the coming month. So, it, like.
Well, that's on our website.
Okay.
You can just go to our website and see what's scheduled for the next few months, or pick one up, I mean, we also print it, so. We have a schedule of all of our programs available for our website.
Yeah. I'm, I mean, specifically from like a project management perspective, right? If I'm thinking of what you're doing, and how it relates to the strategic plan, I would want to see, and, you know, we can talk about this, but I would want to see how your events align with what you outline in your strategic plan.
Okay. I mean, I can really just create a list of what's going on, on any given month. I mean, I see what you're saying as far as you're, I mean, I'm presenting in hindsight, so I can do that, this is what happened in May, when we're sitting here. Here's what the programs we have planned for July is what you're looking for, or you, I mean, we plan programs out roughly 12 weeks in advance.
12 weeks, so that's three months? Okay.
I mean, so that's something that is printed 12 weeks out, has potential for change, but it would still give you an idea of upcoming programs, I would just have to gather them from my department.
Right. And then funnel them into one of the three goals, right?
Would you like to see the schedule included in the agenda packet for each meeting for us?
Well, I think that's a discussion that we need to have, right, is.
It's something that Dara needs to prepare.
Right. Oh, absolutely. We wouldn't be preparing it, right? But I would want to see, you know, based off of, you know, the goal, I don't know, maybe like bring people and groups together, right? And you have that as a header, and then you have your events for three months as they currently stand, that would address that strategic goal or objective.
I, I think that's a good idea, I don't know if we need to look at it every month. If we have a 12-month look ahead, maybe we could look at it every three months.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
We, we, we might be asking for something that we're not really going to do anything with, but it's good to know. And it's good, and if we can see where the, the programs listed for the next 12 weeks are in fact the culmination of the action items intent. Okay, yeah, that's a good thing.
Well, I think, I mean, what, what was the purpose of putting that into the strategic plan then? If you're not going to have a schedule that looks forward?
Oh, I agree. I, I was just saying, how, how, for us to look at, 12-week look ahead every month might be too much, is what I'm saying.
Right. I mean, would it though, because you wouldn't change two of those months, you'd only be changing.
Maybe the third one.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Right. I'm just thinking to meet the intent of the strategic plan, and specifically in the implementation section.
Okay. So, so, so would I give this a, a, a test run next meeting and see how it looks, and how, how we, how we can work with it?
Yeah, and I think maybe that would also help people who might be more sensitive to, to the strategic plan, or don't, you know, like Ron said, we're still working with it. At least then, we have a, we have an outlook, and we have an accomplishment.
Yes.
Like what we're planning to accomplish, what we have.
I really like that.
Yeah.
I'm just, I, I, let's give it a shot, see what happens.
Can it just be, like, how do you envision it?
I literally envision it, like, you have goal one, right, of the strategic plan, and you have bullets under it with the date and what the topic is.
Okay.
Just to start out.
That's nice and simple.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
I like it.
Yeah, because we don't want to just, we don't want to make the, the preparation for this meeting a three-day thing for you.
Well, and honestly, that's what I'm looking at, is I'm just trying to figure out, since I, this is a lot.
Yeah.
Well, it doesn't.
A simple bullet outline, and it also makes it easier for me to discuss.
Right. I, I don't, I don't see any real value for us looking at all these X's and B's every month, I really don't.
Okay.
Right. And then, too, if, I mean, you could make that part of the way you, you list events on the website, too, so that way you're not duplicating efforts. I mean, or you can tag stuff, I don't know, I will have to look at how you do it.
We have a very specific database that we use, that we input, so that people can input their programs with their descriptions, so it populates the various parts of the website.
Okay.
So, I will have to get in there and snoop around to see how feasible it is to try and steal from the list.
Okay.
Because most likely, it's easier for me to just work from the calendar and copy and paste.
Right. Okay. I mean, if you, yeah, okay. So, we're all in agreement that, like, a goal and then bullets underneath with the date?
Yeah. I, I think that that works well, and as long as it's something that's not incredibly labor-intensive for staff, let's do it.
So, goal with bullets underneath, and then within those descriptions of the bullets will be the program we've had, or we're having.
Right.
So, we'll do current month, next month, next month, that sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't have anything for the third month, because nothing's planned, then, like, no problem.
Okay. So, we, as we summarize this, we're going to be dealing each month with five goals, the five goals we established in the previous meeting, and Dara is going to provide us with a little bit different format with goals and bullets, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, we will discuss marketing, program development and outreach, Hispanic outreach, literacy, safety and security.
Right. Yeah. And after three months, it's not necessary that we, that we completely delete these five and go on to five new ones, we could keep one or two, because we think they're important, and we could change the rest, and let the ones that are, that are, seem to be going along extremely well, just put those to the side until they need attention again.
Dara, I, I hope you will tell us, if we're giving you work that is just busy and not accomplish anything, don't be afraid to tell us, because I've been in your seat. Sometimes boards can't get out of their own way, and I don't want that to happen to us.
I don't think she's going to have a problem with that.
I think this is, this is very helpful. I like an outline, that's how my brain works, and makes it easier to queue myself for the discussions, and maybe I have pictures to share on some of our events, or whatever. So, I think that this will be a good way for me to organize if I have something that we can request at the next meeting.
And as I stated before, that is the exact outline that's in the May agenda. So, we're not creating more work. It's, I think what you would add to this is what you're planning for the next 12 weeks. So, what Patricia already established is the, the backward-facing, this is what we accomplished, all you have to add to this is, this is what we're planning for the next 12 weeks. Yeah.
Exactly. And I feel like I was answering these questions in my head to discuss them today, and then we discussed it throughout our previous discussions, so then it seemed redundant. So, next week I'll be, or next month, sorry.
Does any member have any other questions or comments about this?
No.
Ron, I have a quick question.
Okay.
I hope it's quick. What we just discussed, kind of consensus to, you know, do a certain thing with regard to the plan, what kind of reports, is that going to be in the minutes?
Well, if, I believe what we should do if we want in the minutes is to have a motion.
To, what do you mean, to add the forward, I mean, the, the strategic plan, the five priorities that Dara's going to report on will be in the minutes every month, and then the forward-looking agenda and how it fits into the strategic plan will also be in the minutes, because you'll provide that in the report. It'll be in the agenda? In the agenda.
Yes.
I looked at, this is just a personal view, I look at a lot of papers before we have a meeting, other things that I'm involved in and so forth, it's very helpful. have a meeting, other things that I'm involved in and so forth. It's very helpful when I look at the minutes to say, what did we decide? You know, of course, the obvious ones, major decisions to be made, but just a reference to the fact that we've just made, or gave guidance and so forth. Now, if that's a lot of extra work from, you know, minute-taking and so forth, I can understand that, but-
Well, I just wanna clarify. So the minutes that we take are action minutes, and that only covers, this person made a motion, this person seconded it, this was the vote. So in the Agenda Packet, you will get what we just discussed. The five priority areas, what's been accomplished in the past month, and what is being planned for the next 12 weeks. That's part of the staff report, if you will, on the strategic plan update. So if you're looking for a recap of the discussion, you can listen to the audio. That's why we're audio recording it.
Okay. So the minutes won't have the detail, just the action?
Right. Right. So if we wanted to vote on that look ahead or whatever, then that would be in the minutes.
The vote would, yes. Yes. And just as a suggestion, I, I have this binder that I keep with all of my past agendas that I take notes. I mean, that's how I was able to just flip back to May and say, it's already in the May agenda. So that also might help. I think you, you do keep a binder like that, but it is very useful to have, if you're keeping hard copy anyway, to keep it all together, and then you can easily flip back and see what was discussed last time and things like that.
Well, I'm more apt to do that when it's not going to be recorded, you know, in the, in the minutes that we see at the next meeting.
Sure.
Zach, do you, do you recommend that we have a motion on this type of thing, or
I think that the library director has a direction, received direction from you, and I don't think that warrants a vote.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item is the feasibility of revising the rental fee charges for DVDs and books on CDs. John?
Okay. Zach, if you can go ahead and just bring up number one. Okay. What got me started on this is I met with Patricia Crosby and Katie Duperry, I guess it's about a month ago now. And I asked Patricia if there was anything, you know, that, that she wanted to mention that she thought was important. And she, she brought out, you know, we're the only library that I know of, okay, anywhere that charges for DVDs and CDs. And that was a pretty broad statement, and I, I thought that deserved a little research to see what was really going on. So what I did was, I went, went to library websites and got just about nowhere. They don't go into that kind of detail, except I got the, the fee structure for New York City's fines for if you don't bring the DVD back on time. Joanne, Joanna had a, some data that was helpful, but it didn't cover everything I wanted to look at. So I called, I already obviously have Escondido's position and what they charge. I went out and called libraries, individual city libraries and library systems like you find in big cities and counties in San Diego, Riverside, Orange, and Los Angeles counties. Figuring that's, that's our world, pretty much. You know, what, what happens in Poughkeepsie, Idaho, I don't really care. So I'd like to go over that first. So you notice the city of San Diego's got 35 locations. The county has 33 locations. Orange County has 32. Riverside, 37. They're all, uh, they're, Los Angeles, double that. And then individual libraries, Oceanside, Carlsbad, Chula Vista, National City, Temecula, Riverside, libraries of the city, not, not part of the county system. And the same for Ontario and Escondido. Okay, next slide. As you can see, less than half charge. But the ones that do charge are the smaller, single-city libraries. The big county systems and big city systems, everything's free. I, I'm, I'm just speculating that that's because they've got money to burn and, and the smaller cities don't. And you can see the fees are all over the place on DVDs and TVs. It's, this is TV shows and TV series. It's, you know, from 25 cents to a dollar in streaming, free, free for the old stuff in Riverside. The new three-day rentals, and they, they were calling those the new releases, they charged a dollar fifty for. Ontario gave you a TV free movie. It's all over the place. But the, the trend was that the smaller cities, well over half of them charge versus the, the big chain, the, the big, big change, the, the big systems where no one charges. So there's nothing wrong with what Escondido, or it's not, I wouldn't say wrong, there's nothing out of the realm of normalcy with what Escondido's doing as a small city. Okay. Then I went and looked at CDs. This was kind of embarrassing. We, out of all those, and I may have, there may be some small city out there that charges that I didn't find, but I, I, I looked for every individual library in the county of San Diego that I knew of. La Mesa, El Cajon are part of the county system. San Marcos is part of the county system. Vista's part of the county system. So I couldn't find any other small cities. I didn't look that closely at smaller cities besides Riverside and Temecula in Riverside County. I couldn't think of any. But the data speaks for itself, and I, it's, it was, it's, it's not something that I'm, I'm, I'm proud of as a resident of Escondido. Okay, next slide. Okay, so the large systems don't charge. The majority of the smaller's do. There's a variety of rental fees, and Escondido is lower than most. And only Escondido charges for books on CD. I, I might mention that I'm looking at rental charges, not penalties and fees. Just about everybody charges if you're late or you lose the material. And I talked to a couple people about that. I just called all these people, it's just a, just John Q. Citizen, asking what the rental fees were. And, and the one librarian, I think it said it very succinctly, and she says, well, you gotta get them back. So you, you've gotta charge your, your delinquent and, and lost fees. To do otherwise, I, I think, and I've heard that there is a system that doesn't charge for delinquencies, but since delinquent, the, the revenue, as you'll see, on the revenue page, delinquencies make up a hell of a large percentage of the money collected. So, you know, if you, if you give that up, what's gonna happen? So I, I think this just looks at the rental fees. Okay, next slide. The dollars that we collect don't differentiate between DVDs and CDs, books on CD. But if you, I took the 10 months of fiscal year 1819, and I annualized the amounts. These, this is a, a spreadsheet that Patricia got me, got for me, and I think it came from someone in the city. I, I can't verify that, but this is, this is what I've got. You can see that fines, and I, I annualized them, I took the 10 months, divided by 10, multiplied by 12, boom. Okay, that's just, it's, it's not perfectly accurate, but it's probably pretty close. And if you look up in cash receipts, you see some really weird stuff happening in September and October. I have no idea what that is. The rest of the months were pretty much in sync, so I didn't bother going to look. You've got roughly 40%, 46% of the money coming in are for fines and lost, uh, lost inventory. The rental fees amount to about 54%. The annual, annualized total for the two is a little over $8,000. So then to get an idea of how much was CD versus DVD, Patricia had Katie Duperry create a spreadsheet, next slide, that went over, and we looked at the amount of DVDs and CDs issued per month, taken out per month, and multiplied that by 50 cents a piece to get a dollar amount. And if you went back and looked at the other screen on the dollars, and you look at this screen, the monies generated on this, if you, if you use this data, is higher than the other. But there's a lot of reasons that can happen. Apparently, the numbers here include a renewal, and, and, and the library doesn't charge if you renew a, a movie for another week. They don't charge for that. On a book, if you renew the book, I could tell you, at least you can do it at least twice. On a book, on a CD, if they've done it, they don't charge. So that, and if you've got a DVD or CD that was scratched or something happened, it's, you know, staff has the, the option to, if they think it's justified, to waive the fee. I, I don't think that happened. It's happened to me once or twice in several years, so it's not, I don't think germane. But you can see that the, most of the money is in DVDs. Okay? And the amount in CDs is not that substantial. And if you'll notice on CDs, and I, I looked for, I was looking for trends, but I, without having two years' worth of data, I can't tell if this is an annual trend, where it's really high in the summer and then goes down and then comes back up. I don't know. But if you just looked at these 12 months, you can see that the revenue on CDs is going down. But without having another year's worth of data, I can't determine if that's, is, 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 this is gonna keep happening, or if it's just, that's the way it is. Because you can see the summer through October is heavy, and then it lightens up for, for, for the winter and spring. But anyway, the average is 384. Okay, next slide. Okay. So the CD rental fees are about 10% of the total. And just as an aside, all the rental fees and fines go directly into city budget. Library and library patrons receive no direct benefit. Okay, this just goes into the $101 million budget for the city. Wouldn't even make a drop in the bucket. And it was rather obvious that our CD rental policy appears to be unique in Southern California, and in my opinion, it's not consistent with the library's developed policies, and this is right off the, the website, to ensure fair and safe use of a library by all members of the community. What we're doing ain't fair.
You're saying from like a, like an inclusion perspective, right? So for folks who maybe can't read?
Yes.
Be able to listen to books?
Or, or, yeah, or-
Can't see?
Yeah. I, I don't know if there's a, a specific policy for that, but what, what I'm saying is, it's not a, it's, it's just barely a material part of the overall revenue that the city is getting for DB and DVD and CD rentals, since DVDs are 90%. And we are alone that I can find, and, and again, there might be some smaller libraries out there that do charge for CDs, but I haven't found them yet. They, they could be out there. But we are out of the mainstream, way out of the mainstream. I mean, this is, this is embarrassing.
I learned something new today. Starting July 1st, Carlsbad Library will no longer charge for their DVDs.
Okay. Okay. So we're, Mel, you had a question?
Yes. Was there any language in the contract signed by the city and LSNS that dealt with what do you do with this money that has been collected?
Uh, none.
Let me speak to that, please. So John is correct that this money goes back into the general fund. All revenues go back into the general fund. But it's the general fund that funds the professional services agreement, that pays library systems and services to operate our library. So an argument could be made that there is a direct benefit to library patrons, because if we're taking away any revenue source, that has to be backfilled or there, that money has to come from somewhere. So that contract amount is coming out of the general fund.
But also, as I understand, I think it's obvious, the burden is placed on our patrons. They pay the money. They pay the money.
Right. And they're the only patrons in, in the county in Southern California that I can find that pay.
Interesting.
So is there a way to, you know, I know that we talked last time about, like, books on your, your iPhone or iPad or whatever. Is there a way to also be able to listen to those books on your iPhone using the same service?
Yep. Using Overdrive is not called Libi.
Okay.
Yeah, but yes.
All right. So it's still accessible to folks who might not be able to read?
And, and that may be a reason for why the revenues are falling off. We won't know that until we look at, say, two years' worth of data.
The amount of money that goes into the coffers of the city is not a significant amount of dollars with respect to their total.
I'm glad you asked that. I have a number here. Okay, if you, if you take, if you annualize the $384 a month, that's 4,000, $4,608. And you divide that by the city's budget, the basic budget was $101 million. You come up with .0000456. Okay? It's, it's nothing.
But what if you're assuming that, like Joanna said, what we give, we also get back? What is the budget for the library? 250,000, right? Or that's just for materials?
Yeah, it's, I don't have it.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me, but it's like $3.2 million, something to that effect.
Joanna, do we, do we have the right to make this decision, or do we have the right to recommend to the city council to make this decision?
The board has the right to make a recommendation. I would bring that recommendation to the city manager, and he would likely bring that to the council.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's our, our, our job is to recommend. We can't-
Well, so-
We, we can change fee structures or recommend changes in fee structures, but we can't edict.
And there are multiple things that we could talk about recommending, right? It's to, the, the fees for DVDs and TV shows, and then it's the fees for the CDs.
Right.
Or both, or neither.
We, we could also look at how much we're getting for DVDs versus TV shows, because when, when you get it sinking the DVDs, no library, two library systems are the same. Everybody does something different. The ones that charge.
I, I wanna think too about, you know, fee structure for DVDs, right? And it's, you said a dollar?
Depends.
From us, from, from Escondido.
Back, another screen. There, oops, there you go. It's 50 cents for us.
Okay.
Ontario's a buck, and then you can see, you can see the rest. It's all over the place.
So, but if you think about what you're competing against, right, out in, maybe not with library services, but out like with Redbox or something like that, they're gonna charge you a dollar 50. So you're still saving money by going through the library?
Yeah. Redbox will have the new ones, and, and the library will normally get those. I, I don't think they get them the same time Redbox gets them.
We do get them at the same time. It's just there's holes on them.
Ah, that's why I never see them.
So that's something to keep in mind, too.
We, we don't-
We are providing a, a more affordable alternative.
We don't charge the public to check out a book. We do charge if they don't return it in time. Is that correct? But we don't charge them to use that media.
That's correct.
Unless they're late.
I, I, I'd like some discussion. I, I really think we, unless there's some overriding financial danger to saying to the public, no, we're not charging you for these. I'd like to, I'd like to support an idea that we don't charge for DVDs and CDs.
Zach, can you cut to the chase?
A minor significant amount of money with respect to the total budget that the city deals.
Yeah. Zach, can you cut to the last slide? One more. That's, that's my conclusion. This is 4,600 bucks a year, and, and we, Escondido is, and, and to me, this is embarrassing, that we charge for this and no one else does. I'm not, not advocating getting rid of the penalties if you don't bring them back, and if you bring them back late, because might other people might wanna use them. But this is, to me, just not fair.
Dara, what, from a staff point of view- Dara, what, from a staff point of view, what, what is your opinion?
I agree. Um, I, we, it, it is a, I know there's some revenue, so maybe I'm overstepping with the city component, but from a library standpoint, I would like all of our items to be free to go out the door at no cost to the patron, only creating fines and, uh, of course, uh, material fees if the items never come back, that's going to be on your account. But one, the machines themselves aren't always, don't work so great sometimes, and so I think there's a lot of staff assistance with checking out those DVDs and doing the payment part. Um, and as time rolls on, I know the reason Carl's Bad stopped doing it is because the, um, the machines they use to pay with are no longer communicating with biblioteca, which a lot of libraries are using, um, including Oceanside. So Oceanside is, there's some speculation that they'll be stopped following Carl's Bad lead, which would really leave us, for this area, out by ourselves.
So you're talking DVDs that were, were-
Yeah, they only charge for DVDs. They don't charge for those.
Right, so-
The books on CD, yeah, definitely should, I would recommend.
Joanna, you, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah. I just, I, I'm happy to bring whatever recommendation it is that you bring forward to the city manager. Um, I just would bring to your attention that if you haven't been watching the city council meetings or, um, listening to the dialogue around the city's budget situation, that, um, you may want to go back and watch those council meetings and, and the presentation that the finance staff gave around the budget gaps that we're facing. I know that these dollar amounts seem insignificant, um, out of the context of the bigger picture of the city's budget, but, uh, we are facing some real challenges in the next few years. And, you know, every penny adds up to a dollar at the end of the day. And so, I just don't want you to get your hopes up that even though this seems insignificant and for some of you it seems unfair, or that we're out of league with neighboring libraries, um, I just want you to kind of keep in mind the bigger picture of what's happening in the city, so.
I think I'd also like to know what the demand is for the CDs. I think if you have 300 going out each month, what would be the likelihood that that would increase if you lowered the fee?
Along those lines, too, I think, um, it would make a stronger case, a stronger recommendation from the board if you had some reasons why you're recommending this. Are you trying to increase circulation? Are you trying to save staff time? Um, I don't know that the fairness argument, um, if that's the, the path you wanna go down. Um, I think that the, the library's established policy was established under the existing fee structure, so I'm not sure that, um, I would be in agreement that that policy is in violation. Um, I think that fair is not necessarily free. As we've discussed, there are other formats through which to get this material that don't have a fee associated with them. So I'm not advocating one way or another, I'm just trying to give you additional information so that as you're formulating your, uh, recommendation here, you have a bigger picture of, of the context.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we could make the argument that making DVDs free or less expensive would bring more people into the library, that, I, I mean-
I think I would be more likely, that's something we can mention, I would also look at the amount of staff time devoted specifically for dealing with complications of the machines and look at that cost analysis of that amount as a comparison.
When, when we're talking about these machines, is it the same machine I would use to check out a book?
It is.
Is it the three on the left of-
Yes.
-service desk? Okay, so, so I would pay my fines there regardless either, anyway, right?
Right, and I don't think the fines are the issue, it's, there's something separate.
Right.
I would have to give the details from Katie.
But-
If you could explain to me, but I honestly did not read-
Okay. I'm just wondering why there would be a difference between me paying a fine versus me paying for the CD?
Because they're too separate. They're, did you go through this with Katie? Can you better explain that? Cause they're too separate.
What, what are you talking about? Uh, in, to, to, to go through the rental process on the machine? I, I can, I can take out a book on CD, a DVD, and a paperback, a paper book, uh, in the same transaction on the machine.
Right, but, but you use the same keypad, right?
Uh, the, the payment, I normally use a credit card, and, uh, it doesn't charge me for the books, and it charged me for the DVDs and CDs.
Right, but I-
I, I don't understand the question.
Well, I'm, just to clarify, staff is spending a lot of time helping people to get through the CD process.
Over, over half the, um, transactions, um, in the library are done manually on checkout, and roughly half are done on the, on the machines, and the other half are done manually by staff.
Okay, and so you were gonna look into whether or not checking out CDs and having to pay for them is taking up more of staff's time?
There, there's more to it than that, but I can't speak to it in detail at this time, so let me follow up with Katie, cause she has outlined in a discussion before. Um, so let me get clarifications before I speak.
You know, I, I can, I could probably go out to the, to, 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 to the public and, uh, and walk this presentation around, and I could probably get some people to say, "Just send me the fricking bill for 384 a month and I'll pay it." You know, this, this is, this is laughable. This, this is insulting that we're even ta, to me, that we're even talking about, uh, continuing this when we're out of step with the rest of the, uh, the, the rest of the, our, our known world-
Yeah.
-Southern California.
I guess like, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I'm thinking of all the other commissions who would say, or make the recommendation to get rid of, you know, $384 a month in fees, right? So there are, what, eight other commissions? So you're talking about, I don't know, 30 grand a year, which could fund, I don't know, maybe one or half of your, a person on your staff?
I would also just add into the conversation that, to my knowledge, and I've worked, related to the library for 12 years, that we have not had comment cards or discussions from the public about the, the rental fee. Um, it, it's not been a voiced concern of the community that has come to our attention.
Well, it's, it's-
John's point is this, that we're the only one charging for a CD out of all the libraries, and he's recommending we just, we remove the CD rental fees, not everything else, and still keep the fines. So I, I kinda see it the same way. If we're the only ones charging for CDs, maybe we shouldn't.
And we, even if we didn't have any information about all these other places that do not charge anything at all, we're really ste, we're really talking about it, we're crossing the public a certain number of dollars in a significant budget that we have. I had a hard time before when the monies that were collected for this, that went into the city coffers and so forth. I, I had a hard time with that time, but I could understand that was a process and so forth. Unless we have some strong reason to believe that this is gonna fiscally hurt the city operation by not having this money, I don't know why we can't do the public a favor and say, "You can take it out." And you don't pay, but if you don't bring it back in time, you're gonna be penalized because we want you to bring it back.
Okay, I think we've discussed this. Is there someone that would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
What's the motion for?
The motion is that the, the library board of trustees recommended to the city the removal of CD rental fees for FY 2019, 2020.
That's CD?
CD only. Books on CD only.
Books on CD only. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by John and seconded by Elmer, that we recommended the city that we remove the, uh, rental fee on CDs, starting with the, uh, two, what'd you, John?
It, uh, the, the coming fiscal year, 2019, 2020.
Okay. Coming fiscal year, Zach. Okay, please vote.
Motion approved 4-1. Clemmons, no.
Thank you. Our next item is the library director's report.
Excuse me, Ron. We're not discussing DVDs, right?
No, we-
That was just for CDs.
It was just for CDs.
That's not an issue.
$384 a month, okay.
So, can I, I'm sorry, can I get some clarification, though, on what it is that you want me, I mean, do you want me to just go and recommend this, provide this presentation? Do you wanna give me the justifications to convey? How do you want me to present this?
Okay, you have the presentations, uh, you, you know who you're dealing with better than I do. Um, what, what, what else would you like to have? I'll put it together.
Well, I, I would like consensus on the reasons why, because this explains the data, but it doesn't explain why you're recommending this.
Staff time would be mine.
So is Dara going to provide some data to justify the staff time?
I'm against that.
Okay.
Well, if asked.
When, when is the date that this would be needed by?
I think that's why I voted no, is because I needed more time to actually determine how we're gonna make an argument to the city to decrease CD fees.
And the other, the other justification, uh, might be, I've heard these words, uh, it, the potential for increasing circulation. I wanna re-listen.
Well, I, I, my, my main justification is, is just fairness and inconsistency with every other library in Southern California.
And we're talking about books on CD?
Books on CD only.
Books are free, so books on CD should be as well.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Good, John. Okay. All right, library director's report.
Wasn't that for the previous?
Yeah, we already did that.
No, there's a, two separate things. So you have your strategic plan progress, and then you have your director's report. It's totally up to your discretion, though, what you wanna share in that.
Dara, if you don't, if you, if you haven't prepar, prepared, prepared for that, that's not a problem. This would be more general than specific to the strategic plan, and-
Which, okay, which I have done completely out of order, cause I did that at the beginning.
Okay.
What I've been doing is getting acquainted with staff, working to hire a librarian, to, um, and working on the marketing, so.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you. And we're getting close to the four o'clock.
Okay. Good. All right, is there any other items that, oh, I know, uh, it's been, it's been suggested to me that, at the end of the meeting, that we allow members, if they have something they'd like to report on, uh, to do that. We used to do this in the school district. And so, I know that Elmer wanted to speak a little bit about the Rangers program, and then I'll give everybody a chance, whatever you might, and if you don't have something to say, just say pass. Elmer?
Yes, Ron, as most of you know, I'm at the library almost every day about 8:00, and depending on a lot of other things, I may be there for a good part of the day or less than that. Uh, I'd like to report that I've seen a significant reduction in the problem that we've had with people, homeless or whatever, but people around. The Rangers are doing something very good, because I just don't see people out on the grass out there staying overnight and so forth, or at least staying over days and so forth. Uh, there's a significant difference in my viewpoint, and I also have the opportunity, although I don't look for it, I happen to be walking by, and I see how the Rangers handle some of these people. They handle them very appropriately and so forth. Uh, once in a while, and I've only seen it once, when a person, when the Ranger felt that this person might be getting out of hand, they're on the phone and the police are there right away. I think there's a significant improvement already in the result of having these Rangers on board.
Joanna, could you, could you please let Bill Wolf know that we think that this is a real step forward, and that, uh, this is another thing we've, we've struggled with for a long time, and this is the first time, and I've had a couple of community people tell me the same thing. And so, I just want him to know that we're very thankful for his, uh, stepping in and giving us another strategy to deal with this problem.
I'd be happy to, and I actually just received an email today that was forwarded to me by one of the community-oriented policing officers, from a community member, who had emailed him, thanking him, and saying how grateful he was that the library situation was improving, and what a great job the Rangers are doing. So we're hearing it from multiple sides, but I'd be happy to pass that on to Bill. Thank you.
Very much. Carolyn, do you have anything to report?
I don't have anything to report, um, and I guess we did just vote. I, I just think that, um, maybe in order for us to move forward with the, the CD and DVD rental, if we want more information, maybe it would be good on the comment cards to put like a checkbox as to, you know, whether or not peo, people would feel they would benefit from less fees, cause that way that would establish a data set for us, um, for people who are willing to fill out a comment card, um, and make a better case to the city if we wanna revisit this in the future, uh, that, um, you know, most of our patrons would prefer to not have fees, or it would increase, they think it would increase their patronage to the library. That's just a way to look into the future, if we wanna make a, a case for the DVDs in the future.
Thank you. Merrick, do you have anything?
This time.
John? Um, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, section seven of the appendix, whatever appendix it is to the contracts, circulating and reference materials, collection development policy approved by the library board of trustees, and a collection development plan. And Dara and I have talked a little bit about something new that, um, well, it's new to us anyway, I think, um, the 80/20 procurement plan?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's in the library.
Right. And so I'm, I'm gonna try to, to just, for the next meeting, maybe put something together that, that, alright, cause I, I haven't found a, kind of, uh, just to find out if we have a collection development plan and if it's in sync with, uh, what, uh, LSNS is doing, and it should be, and we'll work that out. So I have nowhere, I have no idea where I'm going with this yet, I've gotta, I've gotta figure it out. I've just, just discovered this paragraph here, it's just like, every time I go through this contract, I find something else to go, "Oh geez, what's that?" So.
What is the, what is this 80/20? I'm sorry.
The, um, headquarters will be, the, whether it's divided basically 80/20 for the next year, as an amount for, what is purpose for us based on staff that have been told, so what certain amounts, what certain amounts in English or Spanish, so what has more spelt on it, there, mostly it was best seller type, which is the bulk of this collection and mainly, those items will be ordered at LSNS headquarters, or in, in reverse, actually, by, um, uh, just a team of collection development. The remaining 20 is for alters, things are a little more unique that are, you know, caused directly from, from Taylor. So, you know, some of the, um, graphic novels are the example for the larger publishers, uh, things that might be, maybe a little off-hog or something that we need to, that we need to buy with that ratio of the budget. Um, we can, we can call at any time and add to our order list from the 80% as well, so the 20 is really the type of things that aren't being published.
Okay. Do we have a, a motion to adjourn?
I have one announcement, Ron.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna be on vacation from July 22nd to August 19th. So I will not be here for your July or your August meetings. So if, I'm happy to bring this forward to the city manager before I leave, um, and I can have a staff member, or I could convey that information to Dara, and she can bring that back to your July meeting, or however long that takes to make a decision on this. Um, or if you wanted more time, you could delay this until I get back, but it's, I'm just gonna let you know that I'm gonna be on vacation.
Thank you very much.
May I ask a question along that line? In the past, the board of trustees, uh, when they decided that they wanted to communicate some issue to the city council, uh, we were asked to write, in other words, send a letter, let's say, stating the position of the-
Yes.
Is, is this something that can be handled without that going through, or is it necessary at all, for, for a letter to be written?
Yeah.
Signed by the trustees or something like that?
Um, if it's a formal recommendation, I think probably there should be a letter written by the board to this effect.
Rather than you conveying, rather than you having to convey-
Right.
What they said.
Yes, yes, Elmer, thank you. I think that you're 100% right. I think there needs to be a letter from the board communicating the recommendation, and then I would convey that.
Okay, so, John, since this is the thing you brought forward, would you consider writing a letter that we could take a look at at our next meeting?
Um, sure.
It would come from the, it would come from the board, but we've got to have a draft to start with, and so we could have that on the next meeting. Dara?
Yeah, I'd be glad to do that.
Okay. Any other items? We need to move, motion for adjournment? Moved by Merrick. Do you have a second? Thank, I don't know whether it's John or Elmer, but, thank you. All right, yes, vote.
Motion approved 5-0.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you, all of you.